All right, then, let us begin. Welcome to the October 13th, 2020 Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is Walter Byron, the Planning Board Chairman. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda of present could hear me, so let me start with the board. Mr. Weddleton.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Here.
And Mr. Searle.
Here.
And supporting staff, we have our Town Planner, Rich McCarthy.
Here.
And our Administrator, Betsy Fajol.
Right here.
Okay, and we have a number of other guests who will be speaking, and I presume, to various items on the agenda. So, good evening, this open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. That order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This meeting will feature a public comment on various items. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please also note that all votes taken this evening will be done by roll call vote. All right, with that out of the way, let us look to our agenda, and our first item this evening is 65 Myrtle Street, modification of a state law, special permit decision 2018-02 to amend requirement for conservation restriction. So who is here to speak to that?
I have to read it into the record first? Notice is here, right, given that in accordance with Mass General Law Section 48 and O'Frog zoning bylaws E2H, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM regarding a modification to the special permit for property located at 65 Myrtle Street in Norfolk, Mass 02056. The applicant Pelcon Development of Westwood, Mass is requesting a modification of special permit decision 2018-02 by amending condition of approval number four in order to execute and record the required conservation restriction prior to occupancy, rather than prior to the issuance of a building permit. The property is located in the R2 zoning district, reference assessors map eight block six lot 44.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. And Mr. Conti, you wish to speak, sir?
No, we've already discussed what, you know, like, again, I'd like to amend it, have it with the occupancy permit. The conservation restriction has gone to the state, and it's being under review with the legal department there as of September 24th, so, you know, we are moving forward with it.
Mr. McCarthy, you wish to add anything?
So, on the Conservation Commission Agenda tomorrow night, under the discussion will be the conservation restriction for 65 Myrtle Street. We have worked with Janet along the Conservation Asia, we provided a, there's exhibits that are also incorporated into the conservation restriction that they'll be reviewing tomorrow evening, the purpose for the restriction, and they'll have, that'll be their first opportunity to at least familiarize himself. I was hoping that we would have had the final language from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for tomorrow night. That's not the case, so tomorrow will just be an introduction to the commission, and then seeking their approval at their November meeting, providing, presuming they'll support the conservation restriction based on danger species habitat that's there, preservation of the habitat, so I don't see any reason why they won't support it. Well, that being the case, once we get the final language, the Conservation Commission will sign off on it, and then it will go to the Select Board to sign off, and then we'll, then on turn, go back to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for signature, and then get recorded after, so things are in a better, at least sequentially, than where things are, in a better spot than they were before, but there's still a fair amount of ministry of steps to follow through, but...
And what action do you recommend that our board take this evening?
So, the recommendation is just to shift the requirement of the conservation restriction be recorded prior to occupancy permit. And then, there's one other condition that I, upon reviewing the previous special permit about having the post-rail split fence with the signage in prior to occupancy permit, it was a requirement on the previous plan, but it wasn't, it was silent upon the time for which that should be put in, so I tied it with the occupancy permit. It was really just two changes related to the special permit.
And the draft we've received includes those changes, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. Any further discussion by board members? Any one in the audience care to comment? All right, if not, the Chair will entertain a motion to amend the special permit application modification for 65 Myrtle Street decision of a 2020-05 to include those two changes that Rich mentioned, the split rail fence and sign timing, and the inclusion of the conservation restriction prior to an occupancy permit. Do we have a second, or do we have a motion, I should say, excuse me?
I would make the motion, I would just question the, you said 2005, I didn't recall that number from discussion. Was it 200802, or is it a different number, Rich?
200802 is probably the original one, and this one is 202005. Is that not right?
Yeah, that's correct, 202005 is the new one, modified.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye, let's start with Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
And Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Your votes, aye. All right, thank you all for that. Any further discussion on this point before we move on? Go ahead, someone, go ahead, please.
Aaron, was that a nay?
It was, correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, okay.
Mr. Conti, you have anything else that you'd like to say about that before we move Okay, apparently not, okay, very good. All right, next item on the agenda is review 136 Secoak Street A&R Plan with parcel A to be part of Lakeland Hills Development. Who is here to speak to that?
Bishop Hashem.
Yes. I'm Bishop Hashem, I'm representing the developer.
Shall we, do we want to, should I pull up the plan and screen share it?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Everybody could see the plan?
Yep.
So, should I, well, I think Bishop, you can...
Bishop can speak, go ahead, please, Bishop.
Yes, we're just before you to endorse this plan, this parcel, parcelation on this plan is going to be joined to a development, Lakeland Hills, a 40B development, to become part of that development, and I did send Rich a plan showing how that's going to be joined with it, and it is indicated in, on this plan that this is only to be joined with that parcel as numbered by the assessors' plan.
And Bishop, you could explain to us why it's necessary to do this?
It just, it just makes the approved plan possible, because, Rich, would you have a copy of that plan that I sent you by any chance? Or would it be possible for me to share a screen?
We can share, if you have it handy, and you can...
I do, I do have it handy.
All right, well, we can...
I can email it to you right now, if you'd like.
I can get it from email, if you have it up, I could just screen share with you, and you can...
Okay, one second, please. Yeah, I have it.
Okay, so...
Can you see it?
You should be able to screen share now.
I'm sorry, I'm totally ignorant about this stuff, I don't know how to do that. I have it on my screen, let me see how I can do that, share screen.
I can...
Yeah, here it is. So, can anybody, can everybody see the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this piece, the road, the road, it shows the road and how it squeezes those two or three lots, this piece makes those lots possible, and to fit with it, to make the total approved number of units in the 40B decision possible.
Okay, so, was the road moved in order to...
No, this is how, this is how the road is going, it's not, it hasn't, hasn't been moved.
Well, just to clarify, it's moved through the permitting process, hasn't been...
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if you see, you see his cursor, there's where that wetland resource area is, where the, if you, can you see the cursor moving around?
Yeah.
So, the, it's been kicked out, it's been kicked, so that way, it goes around that wetland resource area, and then you have those three lots that are over there, so...
All right, so the Oharts are willing to part with that land in order to make the Lakeland Farms, those three lots possible, I see, okay, understood.
Walter, I, I don't know if I'm slow tonight or what, but I have no idea what's being requested. I can't make sense of this.
Okay.
As I understand it, Aaron, what's being requested is a, an approval of an A&R plan, of the property that belongs to the Oharts on Secoak Street, which chops off a piece of their land, which will be incorporated into the Lakeland Farms development, and that looks like it's required by Lakeland Farms in order to build three of their lots, because, as Rich said, the road was moved in a direction towards the boundary of that, of that property, and it didn't allow sufficient space for those three lots to be built within the previously approved lot, but with the, with the acquisition of this parcel A, which is the end of the Ohart property, and incorporating that into the Lakeland Farms plan, those three lots are now possible. That's the best I can make of it.
That's correct.
The number of lots is not increasing, and at one time, the same number of lots was approved, but the road had to move because of wetlands?
Correct, we're here just to approve the partition of that parcel A out of the Oharts land, 136 Secoak Street, partitioned that piece, that's all, but the reason for us showing you the other plan is to show how it is not going to be a landlocked parcel, it is going to be joined with the rest of the development, and that's what's stated on the plan.
Okay, and then...
What plan, what plan shows this?
The approval not required plan that was filed with you, that was the first plan that Rich had shown, if you would post that, Rich, I would appreciate it.
Bear with me a second here, I'm gonna stop. Gonna take over.
Walter, this, this really isn't even an A&R filing that is standard, I don't even think this should be before our board. You got two abutters swapping a small little piece of land, and each, each parcel is not losing its zoning requirements by swapping this little piece, you're not really creating another lot, you're just having the abutters give one little piece of land to another, there really is no creation of a new lot, so I question whether this even has to come before the planning board, but if this has to be signed by the, by the planning board to be recorded, is that the case, Bishop?
Yes, it's for the purpose of transfer of deed at the registry. We cannot, we cannot say, you know, this portion without having a plan, and that plan needed to be endorsed by the Planning Board in order to become recordable.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Why would we endorse this plan? Walter?
Would we endorse it? Well, we would endorse it just as a courtesy to both parties.
No, he's allowed to do this by right, that's why we're endorsing it, we don't have any jurisdiction over this type of land transfer, we're not creating a lot that does not comply to zoning, so we really don't have any right in this.
Right, so, again, why, why are we here?
So, they're...
We're here because, as we just heard, in order for this plan to be recorded at the registry, it has to go through the Planning Board process and have our signatures on it.
Well, then, we must have a right to review it.
And we are reviewing it, are we not?
But I don't, again, I just, I don't know what we're, what basis of judgment are we using to make a decision on this?
It's an approval not required plan, that's before the board, could, Bishop, could you stop screen sharing, I'm trying to...
I'm sorry, how do I do that?
No way, I could take over, take it back over, should be... Betsy, you know how to stop him from screen sharing?
Okay, I stopped it.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up the plan again. So they, so the Oharts filed an approval not required plan, seeking planning board They're endorsed, what they're seeking is to carve off the rear portions lot, which is parcel A, which is labeled not buildable lot, because it's going to then be sold to Bishop, to become incorporated into the 40B development that was approved by the zoning Board of Appeals, 144 Secoak Street. So this is one party, what, it's a family, this is part of Mr. Ohart's family here, they're selling a portion to Bishop, which will then be combined with 144 Secoak Street, the 40B, and then that plan will then be filed with the registry of deeds and recorded as the comprehensive permit. The lot meets the requirements and has more than ample frontage for the zoning district, has more than ample lot size area, the lot, it's customarily, if somebody wants to swap a piece of land with somebody else, that doesn't affect their frontage and access, that this is a method that's commonly used, where they'll just label a piece of property as a parcel, and then it gets combined later, in this case, it's being combined with a comprehensive permit, but typically speaking, if it wasn't a comprehensive permit, it would be merged with the lot, but it's a different conveyance process, because it's a 40B development.
What if we didn't approve it?
The town clerk can stamp this in 30 days automatically. By state law, we cannot disapprove this.
Yeah, so, if you don't, exactly, if you don't vote to approve it, it'll run 21 days, and then the town clerk will have to attest that it's past that period, and then they'll have to record it, and then they can record it, so... I mean, if you, if you so choose not to approve it, that's fine, it doesn't, fundamentally, it meets all the requirements, so if there's some extraneous reason, that's fine, I suppose, but, but it's not, this isn't, it's common practice to do, to convey land this way.
All right, I think at this point, it's, it's worth testing to see if we can get a motion to approve the A&R plan for the Ohart properties.
I just asked and confirmed that nothing's being changed? So the scope...
What do you mean, nothing's being changed?
The scope of, I can't tell, again, to Aaron's point, I can't tell by the plans, but nothing has changed with regard to the scope of this development, the same number of houses that were approved before are units, hasn't changed, and you're just adding a small piece of land to the frontage, because the road had to get redesigned because of wetland. Is that really the full scope of what we're seeing?
So, the, the plan that Bishop had shown you before, that includes this portion here, this is deep into, if you want me, I can pull, I can show you the, the, the plan itself, the overall 40B development, this went from 100 and some units originally?
Yes, I remember, I'm just asking, with the addition of this land, as it was a month ago, the plan is not changed with regard to the number of units?
No, the, the plan that was approved by the ZBA was predicated on this being combined with that.
Any other comments from board members? Anyone in the audience care to comment?
Walter, you've got two people with their hands raised.
All right, please identify them and...
Karen Clark. Karen, if you would unmute yourself, and you can ask your question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, looking at the plan that Mr. Hashman has provided to the board versus looking at the plans that were a part of the final decision by the ZBA on this development, it appears that there's some difference. I don't know if we can bring up the original plans that were stamped, I believe in September, versus what Mr. Hashem presented to the board. Mr. Hashem's plan appears to have three units in that half acre area, whereas the plan submitted by the board and approved by the board in September has only two homes in
Let's see. Rich, I don't know that we have the ZBA plan available to us, do we?
I'm going into the website right now.
Yeah, it's on the town's website.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is really not a discussion about the 40B project, this is just a discussion, just like I said, to partition a piece of property, to join it to an abutting property for the purposes of transfer of title, for the purpose of registering, put it, the registration and transfer of title, any issues that, that the lady that's speaking has with, there is still a process with ZBA, because final approval on the plan has not been granted yet, the, the, the final approval on the comprehensive permit was granted, but subject to a final permit, a final plan, which has not been filed yet with, with ZBA, which, which would be filed, so I, I think it's, it's counterproductive right now to talk about the, the project next door, in, under the scope of this, this discussion.
I understand your point, however, one of our board members has asked a question about the number of, of lots, and I think it's appropriate to at least answer the lady's question, if we have the drawing, it won't necessarily change our, our procedure here tonight, but it would be good background information to have, I'll allow it.
Walter, if I might add to that, I mean, I guess this is what I was digging at, I mean, the 40B plan isn't approved yet, so in theory, it could change, and adding this land means he could add, they could add houses to the development, so...
Well, I don't know if that's true, Aaron, but anyway...
But it is, I mean, they have, they have more land, they can do more things with it, right, so, but, but what I'm hearing is, is that's irrelevant, because there's, whether we approve this or not, it's going to get approved by the town clerk in 30 days, so our vote, our vote tonight is irrelevant.
Walter, if I may...
John?
Before us is the A&R plan for Secoak Street, not the subdivision behind it, not where it's going, our simple, our vote here is, do we allow an A&R plan for the lot on Secoak Street? The lot on Secoak Street is cutting off a back, a back piece, it still leaves a lot that is all within the zoning requirements, it's, we're not creating a non-buildable lot, or a lot, I should say, that doesn't apply with zoning, so where the back land goes is irrelevant to our hearing.
And may I, may I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Okay, just to answer Mr. Hunt's point, it is, it is incorrect to say that you can, the comprehensive permit has been approved for 40, specifically for 44 units, even if we add a larger parcel than this parcel that, that was being added, it cannot be, it cannot, in the final plan that will be presented to ZBA, it has to show no more than 44 units, period, that's what's been approved, and it has to comply with the preliminary plan that was approved with, with ZBA, and so by, by final, the 40B laws provide that the comprehensive permit will be granted based on what's called a preliminary plan, and this is what was approved, the definitive plan, with, with minor modification, will be, will, will, will address any other details, but the, the, the number of units cannot be increased, no matter how, how big a parcel you join to it, but like Mr. Weddleton said, that, you know, that is really a moot point, because we are only talking about this parcel being partitioned to... But like Mr. Weddleton said, that, you know, that is really a moot point because we are only talking about this parcel being partitioned to
Right, I, thank you, Mr. Hashem. I take the advice of my vice chair here and
You know, Walter, our planner is there, Rich. Rich knows what I'm saying backwards and forwards, it's kind of straightforward. So I think Rich should, should just give us his thoughts on what's before this board and what's allowed to be done. I shouldn't have to be saying this stuff.
No, you don't. And I said it before. So again, this comprehensive permit was approved by the Board of Appeals for 44 units. It was a preliminary layout for the site, yes. The, um, Mrs. Clark's point may be taken. However, there is a set number of lots that were approved by the ZBA that are going, be going through the final engineering process. The, the so let me back up. As far as this plan goes, before the Plan Board, it meets the criteria. Like I said, it's, it's a conveyance of a piece of property. It's a parcel. It's not a lot. It's not a buildable lot. It's going to be conveyed to 144 Seacombe, a comprehensive permit to finish going through the, the rest of the review process for the comprehensive permit. The roadway, as Fisher has showed you, was shifted in response to the peer review and the critiques from the ZBA and the public about impacts to the wetland area. So that's what
Where, where, where the land is being transferred to is not relevant to our, our filing here. Doesn't matter. It's not part of the filing.
I'm prepared to entertain a motion to approve the A and R for, for the O'Hart property on Seacombe Street. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Walter, we have one more person that has, uh, of their hand raised. Bill, Bill Pontz?
Hi, I'm not good at public speaking, so please forgive me if I stumble. So I, I listened and you're saying that the motion has nothing to do with the development. But I'm curious, after seeing the picture, and my mind is thinking, is there, and it may have nothing to do with this meeting, is there any way that it's possible to make sure that an easement does not get put into this new half acre that's being gifted or sold or whatever, to go against a possible future sale or gift of two or three more acres from the existing O'Hart property, which would then be allowed to be developed?
That has nothing to do with this filing, but you're correct.
I, I understand that, but.
He could do with that back piece, that's not relevant to what's before the board. What he can do or cannot do and what he combines or doesn't really isn't relative to this hearing.
John, to say that, to say that another way, you know, the O'Hart property could sell as much of their property as they so choose, as long as they maintained a viable lot per town.
Absolutely, exactly right, exactly right. And this is state law. I mean, you know, this shouldn't, there didn't have to be a discussion on this.
All right, well.
The issues with the, with the 144 project and all that, but, you know, as a board, we have to follow state law along with the local stuff. And this is straightforward. What they do with that land, if he intends to put an ice cream store back there. So this particular filing, it doesn't matter. Fisher is just very kind in, in answering these questions, but you know, it's not relevant.
Walter, I think it's time to call the question.
That's where I'm at.
There's a motion on the table.
Well, there isn't one yet, but I would
I made a motion already. Before Mr. Pointy said something, I made a motion.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on, on the floor to accept the A and R plan for 136 as presented for 136 Seacombe Street. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you all for participating and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Next item is Noon Hill Acres Redwood Circle, discuss subdivision completion installation, street sign. Rich, you want to inform the board on this topic, please?
Well, absolutely. So there are, uh, Redwood Circle is the name for Noon Hill Acres Development that was approved and permitted by Dave Delzel. I don't see him on this call. We did send a Zoom link to him to join and the, uh, way to the board from the frustrations for the residents, so the simplest thing that they have asked for, and he hasn't done, is put up a street sign. That's where we start. And it's gone on for many, many months. And at one point, there was to investigate whether the town put up the street sign, although it's not the town's responsibility because it's a private development. So discussions with DPW, they had said, listen, we're sympathetic and have empathy for the neighbors, but it's really the developer's responsibility to put the street sign up.
Some, some background, Rich, is there a bond on this subdivision?
There is a bond.
Is there, is there a, how much is the bond?
It's $50,000.
How, how much is left to be done on that subdivision? Is there a punch list?
There is. Uh, they, they did complete the last house as far as the heavy work associated with building the home. So he's in the position now that he can complete the subdivision and get it, and then petition to have it accepted, although now's not the time to start completing the project.
Is the final code on the road?
It is not.
It's not on the road.
It's not.
So we're here dickering around because there's a street sign that's missing.
Yeah, John, quite frankly, um, I'm a little bit frustrated by the lack of performance.
Well, you know, what, what about, I mean, it's a public safety issue when you don't have a street sign with emergency vehicles. What about us just paying it and then charges his review account? And let him chase us?
Yeah.
I mean, a street sign's only $150 or so, can't we just put it in? But it, it has to go in because it is a public safety issue. If somebody calls an ambulance, they don't know where it is, then it's a problem. And just charge his account, just like we do with plowing.
Well, we, I attempted to do that in that direction, but it was concerned by Public Works about not only the sign, it's the labor to install and so forth, so.
Yeah, but right now, we're in the approval process of a subdivision, so it's the planning board's jurisdiction, not the DPW until it's taken over. I would suggest, like I said, does he, does he have an engineering review account or a subdivision review account with money in it?
He does have an engineer.
I would take the money, I mean, just take the money out of that and get the street sign. Rather than making the federal case out of this whole thing, you know? Save the document for what you paid. I mean, he can't just, no different than a developer cannot not plow a road and people can't get access to vehicles if there's a snowstorm. Eventually, the town has to plow it because it's a public safety issue, and then we backcharge the developer. This is just much smaller potatoes than a, a plowing incident. I don't blame the neighbors. I'd want a street sign too.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea to me, John. Do we need to, uh, do we need to communicate with DPW and tell them to do it and get, take the money? They'll get reimbursed?
I would do that, just take the money out of it. We're allowed to sign checks on the engineer review account that way.
You are, so vote to have them do it and bill us for the labor and so forth, then.
Charges account.
Yeah.
I know Dave Delzel, I can actually call him. I, I don't know what's going on here or whether there's issues with relationships or what, but it doesn't seem like a big deal.
No, and it, as John, as you said, it's a, it's a public safety issue. All right, so, so Chair will entertain a motion to direct the DPW to erect a sign and, and we will pay them for it. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, I hope to see Mr. Delzel at the next meeting. All right, next item, Alexandra Estates at Frederickson Road, Oakview Trail, discuss subdivision completion. I see Mr. Bonvey is with us.
Please interrupt quickly. This is Jonathan Akon, one of the neighbors down at Noon Hill. Just to finish off that conversation, is there any plan, right now it's just a binder coat of pavement. Is there any plan to put a top coat on that and then also reset all of the curving that's been disrupted throughout construction?
Rich, maybe you've had a conversation about that with the developer?
I have had a conversation and, and he, he does need to finish it. The only, the issue is a is, we're not, he needs to jump, have to remind him to start this in the spring. Now is not the time because we're up against it relative to the weather. But you should jump on it in the spring. There's no reason not to. And if he doesn't perform, we might have to be in a situation where I'd be before the board asking to pull the bomb and have DPW do it.
Is the curving in? Is it granite curving?
No, it's not granite curving.
Okay.
The drain, the drain, the drains are covered as well.
Are the, are the, uh, street, are the, uh, street trees in?
No.
You folks don't have street trees?
No. There is, there is some curving down there, but it's all, it needs to be reset. It's all, it's all topsy-turvy and messed up from years of construction from, you know, the four lots that are down here.
Is it granite or is it bituminous?
It's granite.
So, well, does, does it have this granite subdivision, Rich, or is it bituminous? This man's saying they already started putting in granite.
Well, it's been here for probably seven or eight years or
Oh, I understand. So is the whole subdivision.
Right, exactly.
I'll have to look and see if there was granite on the radiuses or.
That was approved about 10 years ago, so I think at the time, we were doing all slope granite.
Confirmed, it's all slope granite here.
Okay.
I'll have to he's not, uh, well, if you want to call him, he's been very unresponsive, quite frankly, so I can't.
This is, uh, I'm another neighbor. My name is Tom Cushman. Thank you, gentlemen, for, and the board for taking down the street sign issue, which I appreciate the concern about finding the street. We've had several, I've, I was, we were the first people in the subdivision. And we got several, after that, we had several cases where people couldn't find the street. We had an elderly gentleman that moved into one of the houses that was not able to get the ambulance to find his house. And then subsequently, last year during the, during the lockdown, we had another incident where the ambulance couldn't find the street. So I'm really grateful for that. My question concerns what measures can be taken to to have Mr. Delzel complete the work. If he's not responsive, he was supposed to show up at this meeting, I suppose, or at least he was invited. We've been almost, it'll be almost four years since we moved in. And we had assurances from several different parties that there would be a road put in once the last house was built. So I'm hoping that in the spring we can, I think, Richard, thank you very much for working with us. I think that, I hope that in the spring we can maybe make it so that somebody does the, does the road. I don't know what pressure can be brought to bear on the developer. I assume he's been granted permits with the promise that he would do that, so I'm just asking that question.
Rich, you want to respond to that?
So the bond is $72,000 that we're holding. It's, um,
It's not going to cover granite curving?
No.
Now, we're not looking for, for really all the bells and whistles. I mean, it is in disrepair now. That just has to be removed, it seems to me, but.
No, we're just, we're just looking for the fact that the town has to take over the, over the road and finish it. What are the financial consequences? That's all. That's why I asked.
Oh, no, it's great. We're, we're, you know, we, we hope that'll happen, that's all. I just, I hadn't weighed in on it at all. My other neighbors had been, but I was away last year, so. I'm just throwing in my, my piece on this because I, you know, it'd be nice to have it finished. You know, we are taxpayers. You know, and, you know, we, we, you know, we hope that it'll, it'll get finished somehow and not protracted into the next calendar year.
Well, we, we have a punch, we have a punch list that Rich alluded to, and we will follow up with that and get the developer to do it, or we'll pull a bond and, and the town will finish it.
That's wonderful news for us. I think all my neighbors who are listening in might be happy to hear that. Thank you very much.
I think we're going to follow the same process, Walter. Some of the previous ones, we'll have to have them over the winter time instead of a timeframe. He doesn't perform.
Yep.
I'm going to have to, I'll, I'll be asking the board to pull the bond and finish it if they're not going to do it.
Right, all right. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we can move on to Alexandra Estates. Rich, you want to start? Mr. Bonvey's with us, I think.
Sure. I do know that significant progress has been made. The, the sidewalk top coat has been put in. The paver was, uh, he's anticipating coming in to do the top coat this week, which, um, well, the weather wasn't, the weather didn't work out today or yesterday. DPW is aware, they're waiting to come in and do the, to oversee the job. They have been overseeing the work thus far with the sidewalk. They said it was satisfactory as to the job to be performed. I would anticipate that it'll be done coming up. They do have to, Mr. Bonvey could talk a little bit, but he does have some driveway work he needs to do before they can put the top coat in, so. Ron, did you want to just go through that sequence, if you don't mind? Just explain it to the board?
More than happy to. There are two 12-inch pipes that were installed that are out of PVC, actually plastic, that are under the driveway aprons where drainage crosses under the driveways. There are two locations, one at Mr. Koppelman's driveway and another location on Frederickson, which is the opposite road. They both have to be replaced during an inspection by the town and my engineer. We noticed that they were plastic. The plan show clearly depicts them as ductal iron. I have the pipes. They're going to be replaced either this Wednesday or Thursday, meaning tomorrow or Thursday, depending upon weather. Monday at the latest because I spoke to my paver today, A1, and he anticipates paving this week. And what he wants to do is pave Mr. Koppelman's driveway first before he paves the road, so he doesn't rotate his machine on a newly paved road and tear it up. So those pipes are going in this week. I have them in my possession. My foreman picked them, one of my foremen picked them up. The 12-inch ductal iron, 20-foot-long pipes, and we'll be replacing both of those locations. And at that point in time, Lenny from A1 Paving, who I have a contract with, and a sizable deposit as of approximately three or four weeks ago, will be topping that road this year, this week, next week at the latest.
Have the structures been raised in the subdivision?
Excuse me?
Have the structures been raised and set for paving?
He has cut back driveways. There are two more structures to raise. He didn't want to raise them until I put my pipes in the driveway.
So all the rest of the catch basins and manholes are all raised and set to be paved?
It's a rarity. There is only in the whole subdivision, I think, three manholes that have to be raised. All of it is other sheet drainage that runs, runs off the, the sides of the roads, et cetera. So the amount of structures are only, I believe, three, one throat, throat stone. Everything else is asphalt berm, monolithic, with the new paving machine that he just bought.
But you haven't raised those three structures yet?
I spoke to him today and he said he didn't want to raise them until I put the pipe in, and he said he could raise them this week, beginning of next week at the latest.
All right, if you, if you haven't got the structures raised, you're certainly not paving this week, that's for sure.
Well, again, it's only two, maybe three.
I understand.
Said he could raise them, we're using, he said he could use the raising, just using the raising structures, the, the steel raising bars. He could raise them very quickly. So that's what he told me today in a conversation I had with him.
He's correct in that. Incidentally, I have had, I meant to bring this up, Walter, if I might. David's approached me. I know a few folks on Frederickson. Cars right now are cutting through from Mount Rock across the break between the two cul-de-sacs and speeding down Frederickson.
Wow.
And it's become a serious problem. I guess there's a lot of young kids on Frederickson. The reason it wasn't connected is because it's an 18-foot-wide road with a lot of curbs and, and sight distance issues. I think that we had talked about this a while ago. I think this may call for putting up some I think that we had talked about this a while ago. I think this may call for putting up some metal, what do you call the balance?
Ballards, ballards.
Ballards across there so cars can't get through. But I guess it's becoming a regular thing with folks on the other side of town going, cutting through there.
Yeah, I just connected the two roads with a sidewalk. Per our meeting, our conversation a week, a month ago, I put a sidewalk between, it's not in the plan, but I was asked to connect the two roads with a four-foot wide sidewalk because people were walking between both of them.
Yeah.
That sidewalk is done. I can put a ballard up.
Yeah, this is a different issue.
Yeah, I could put ballards up on both ends, but the problem is, Richard was going to check, I don't know if he did, in reference to the fire department for access, because if you put up a steel baller that I'm used to putting up like a lally column painted or something, you'll never get a fire truck through there. So whatever you tell me, I'm more than happy to put a control structure up there. I just, I know during the permitting, there was a discussion that a fire truck in an emergency could get from one road to the other. I just don't want to block a fire truck's access permanently.
We can check with that, Rich, and find out if the, if the ballards present a problem. We can put a big thick chain across there with ballards. When the fire department comes, they just snip it and go right through. So either way, we should find out which way we have to rectify what's going on there.
Yeah, John, we wanted to see when, when the decision was made to pave it, to actually make it a sidewalk, that, to see what was going to happen. I mean, if people continue to drive through there with it being a sidewalk, but we can look into, if we got to go that next step, I mean.
I'm well, certainly willing to do it. I'm willing to put up the ballards and/or a chain or whatever it needs to be done. As I've already added a sidewalk, which is over and above the plan. I have no problem adding that. If in fact you give me direction to do.
Good. I'm glad you brought it up, John. I thought we had agreed long ago that we were going to have boulders strewn across there, which would allow people to get through, but not cars. I think a couple of ballards or two ballards and a chain is a great idea because I do agree that we ought to provide public safety vehicles access through there. Okay, Rich, you want to follow up with that one?
I will.
And Rich, if you could just give me a whiff between the ballards so that I can make sure when I put the ballards in that they're far enough apart for access?
I will.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Bonvey, you want to comment on?
No, I just, you know, I, I've been on Lenny A1. John knows, I, I wish it was done a week ago. We're just trying to get some things straightened out. I've signed a contract some time ago. It will be done this year. I'm not asking for any more time. We're going to have it done this year, meaning before the season closes, it will be topped.
Yep. Okay. Well, we got two good days this week, tomorrow and Thursday, so at least you can get the pipes in.
It's going to get topped. I can tell you right now. I've got a substantial deposit there, so it will be topped.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you, sir. Rich, anything else?
No.
Any of the neighbors present who wish to comment? Apparently not. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bonvey. All right. Next item. Toils End Farm Fox Run subdivision, discuss subdivision completion and drain line review. Rich?
Yeah. So as I mentioned in my letter to the board, I did review some of the drain. We went through some of the drain video with Phil Perez from Beta Engineering. What we, what Phil and I discussed is actually have an offline workshop meeting with, with the chair, vice chair, Beta, and representatives from Pulte and the engineering company to go through the videos, not all the entire videos, but spot check-throughs. Because when you look at the videos, it's, it's a little challenging to, to determine whether the, the camera has zoomed in so far, whether a little crack, it's a little crack or a significant crack. So we thought.
There are cracks.
Huh?
Are you saying there are cracks?
There's cracks, yes.
All right. Gary, here comes the water.
Yeah, it's cracked after one year. That's interesting.
Rich, incidentally, the company in Florida that was the one that sold this product, sold it to us and put it in. You might want to contact them, get the number from John Ingle, and send the tapes down to them. See if they would be willing to take a look at the tapes and give us their thoughts. Not that I would use them as the, the final say, because they have a vested interest in saying it's no big deal. But I think if we're after a year and a half and it's cracking already, I wouldn't say that's a big positive.
Yeah, no, I can, I can do that and do that before we meet with them. Yeah, it's probably a better idea.
Just a point of clarity, what crack? The pipes that weren't touched, the, the fix that was put inside the pipe, patches? Because there were three different degrees of repair, and I think some things may not have even been touched.
It's a good point.
Right. So it's a combination of what, so for example, there where the drain pipes come together, there's a, the way they repaired it. It doesn't, there's some black material. It's kind of, it's kind of hard to understand what, what we're looking at in some respects. So that's why we want to.
Talking about the connection where the drain pipes, where the bells connect?
Yeah. But there's some where it's in there, but then there's gap, there's some gaps in there and there's some cracks. So I think it's, it's one of those things where when you look at the video, it, it helps kind of talk through it to be able to see what we're talking about and talk through the issues. So now, again, they might, they might not be significant, but I like to get, you know.
Certainly worth waiting a few more years to see how these cracks sort of transpire.
But I think, I think your point's taken, John. I'll, I'll reach out to John Ingle to send them to see if he sent them to that company to inspect them before we meet with them.
Would it be better for Beta to meet with, would it be better for Beta to engage the other companies, seeing as how they're both engineering based?
That probably will happen, but not the first go around, I would say. Yeah, we'd like to have John's point, I guess. Maybe he, maybe John did send them to that company, but I'm not sure that's the case. So I want to verify.
No, he didn't.
Hi.
Not to be presumptuous, but he didn't send them to the company. And I mean, this to me, this to me makes the approval in the town meeting, the next one. Whatever contingency or bond that they give Town Council of Insurance contract, I wouldn't be getting into that at the next meeting with cracks shown after one year. I got to stress to you, being through this whole project, as Gary knows, if these fail, that is a significant cost to repair those. You're digging up the whole road with gas lines and pavement. It's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah. So we're just on the itty-bitty step right now, just to, to look at the drain lines. We're not, we're not, there's no, there's not discussion about going step two here, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's just a matter of understanding what's on those videos to, to know whether, to kind of assess, is this something normal or is it beyond the repair work? Those kind of questions right now.
Okay. So you're going to send the tapes down to that engineering company and then after we get their response, we'll, we'll have a meeting and look at the tapes, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Anything else that you want to talk about on that subdivision?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Anyone else have any comments before we move on?
Will, will there be a report issued at some point in time that you can share with this board on the pipes and when will that come? That, will that be coming from Beta?
Yeah, it will be. It was, as we, as Phil was going over the video, he looked at the videos, then he got me on the call. We're going through them and said, look, I think we need to step back first before I go deeper into this. And get a, get a better understanding of what's going on.
A month, two months? What do you think before they issue a preliminary report?
It's probably a couple of months. I would think probably December-ish. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Folks, the next item is a vote extension of three David Road site plan decision 2018-07 and earth removal permit to April 10th, 2021. Someone wish to speak to that?
So we have the owner online and we have the project engineer for the project, so.
Yep.
And as I did, I just a quick intro recap, recap to the planning board. We did have a pre-construction meeting for this project on September 28th. So I do know that he's moving forward with the process to move forward with the project. So hopefully this is just more of a formality to grant that extension and he can explain why he needs the extension.
Okay.
You're on mute.
Somebody's on mute, I guess.
I'm Brian Weiner from Dunn McKenzie. I'm here this evening if there was questions about the engineering that we completed. But I do know the owner planned to attend as well, and he's anxious to get started with the project work as soon as possible.
He's here.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So I, I had to hold off for a while because of the financial circumstances. The, the interest, they were very high and I did not, everything was very expensive. And then, so I had to wait and then, and then after I found better deals with the contractors and subcontractors and the building companies, so I just decided to move on. There was no other reason other than finding the right time to start the project.
Okay. Questions from the board? Is this the long rectangular building that's proposed on, was it David Street?
David Road.
David Road.
David Road. Is that the one? Is it a warehouse type building? Is that, I'm trying to remember the filing.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Rich, you want to put the plan up?
Sure. Hold on, hold on a second.
Walter, is this a site plan extension or a special permit extension? This is a.
Site plan.
Site plan and earth removal permit. Have they been in effect for a year or two years? Let's see. I'm not sure. When does the, when was that originally signed and approved? The decision number is 2018-07, so it was probably somewhere around 2019 when, time we got to it.
The, the plans were endorsed July 9th, 2019.
Yeah, okay. So it's a little over a year, John.
Yeah, that's. I'm getting the plans now, just.
Yeah, okay.
This is the layout.
Yep.
That's.
Yep, we, I remember that. Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Any further questions from board members? Any, anyone else in the audience care to make a comment or have a question?
No.
All right. Then if not, ho.
Is, is that sufficient time? You're only, it's going out to 4:10, 21?
Well, once they exercise it, once they start it, then we're all set. It's just a matter.
Okay.
To get, can start the construction.
Okay. All right. Then Chair will entertain a motion to extend the site plan decision 2018-07 and earth removal permit for Three David Road to April 10th, 2021.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Weddellin? Aye. Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. You have it, sir.
Thank you so much, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discuss Silver Fox Road street acceptance. Rich?
So if you recall, we did talk about it a couple of months ago. This is the formal referral to the planning board from the select board to lay out Silver Fox Road. What ended up happening was there was.
Rich, sorry if I could jump in. Walter, did we skip the correspondence section?
Oh, we did. Not on my agenda.
There's a new agenda.
Maybe I missed, I'm one issue back, I guess. Perhaps we did.
Oh, so am I. That's why I'm here.
Rich, tell me what, what item I'm missing on my agenda here.
So is Mrs. Whitney's letter to the board, Hunter, environmental, heavy equipment trailer?
Oh, I, I wrote that in pencil. Okay. All right. Well, let's see. We received that letter, we read the letter. The request was to enter it in the record and I agree to do that.
Okay, Walter, is it okay if I make a few comments? Or is it not the right time?
Well, Elizabeth, please make it brief, but yes, you may.
Yes, I absolutely will. Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville, near Hill Street. You, so each member of the board got a copy of my letter and the photograph, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So they're familiar with the content of the letter?
Yep.
Yes.
I wanted to clarify that, yes, I have seen the large trailer behind the truck on Valley Street several times. It did alarm me that possibly heavy equipment was being run from Six Hill Street up and down Hill Street to load and unload. I don't know if that is what happened. I surmised that this is what would take place. Either way, and I, I am close to Six Hill Street. I take walks in the neighborhood. I observe it often. I have realized that the large trailer behind the truck, I suppose, could go up and down Hill Street and do the loading and the unloading on Hill Street. But nevertheless, it's an awful burden for Hill Street, which is two-way traffic. And it's a burden for the physical street itself. And if trucks hauling long trailers with large, heavy equipment aboard are parked on Valley Street on the side of the road, that's a hazard too. And what I am the most worried about is that the photograph I included is a preview of coming attractions, especially if the business expands. I feel it would be yet another infringement into our neighborhoods. So as a Norfolk citizen living in Pondville and being committed to maintaining our area's present residential integrity and our residential way of life, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Be sure that you got my letter and understood how it fits into this whole concern of mine. The photograph was taken around September 25th. However, and so I'm done. And I know that another meeting will be scheduled in the future with the planning board when Nathaniel Hunter produces a new plan. Thank you. produces a new plan. Thank you very much for
Well, was there a name on the truck?
Yeah, Hunter Environmental. I took the picture. So
Yeah, I think, I think Nathaniel Hunter is operating out of that piece of property under the existing F-11 that he was given by Bob.
Was there a heavy, was there a heavy piece of equipment on the trailer?
Yes, there was, John. Yeah, it was a front loader.
I don't know if you can see that.
You know, any, any piece of heavy equipment in the town of Norfolk has to be unloaded on private property or you get a permit from the DPW, and this is so they don't mess up the roadway, so
Sure.
If that thing is being unloaded on a town road without a permit, then that would be an issue too. You should probably at least forward that, Betsy, to the enforcement officer, so he has a record for his file.
I was going to suggest that, that Rich do that, since it's right next door, he could hand it off, hand a copy over to Bob. Would you be
I would appreciate that, Rich, to do that. I would appreciate that very much, and I will check in with you. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the attention.
Okay, Betsy.
Thank you so much.
All right, now, Rich, I haven't missed any other items. Can we move on to, to Silver Fox Road next?
I have vote. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So as you were saying, go ahead.
So just to pick up where I left off, it was a title issue, it was a questionable title issue after that was discovered after the November 19th, 2019 town meeting. It was a back and forth between Mr. Rocka's attorneys and town council's office, which was resolved, but unfortunately it came after the 120 days from which town meeting was dissolved. So now the road is back up, just to go back to the process to revote. Everything else, you know, the bond was released, the road is fine. It was just a question of the title. There is no question about the title at this point. It was really interpretation of the way a subsequent piece of property was conveyed. Town council has no issue with it, so hopefully the planning board just recommends to accept it as a public way. The select board has the hearing for the public meeting on 20th of October. And they would recommend Silver Fox Road as a public way and tell me votes on them will be, then after town meeting is dissolved, Carol issue a certificate of vote, we'll record the acceptance plan, the deed, and then it'll be done. Put this one behind us.
All right, any questions from the board members? Any questions from anybody in the audience? Hearing none, Chair will accept a motion to recommend the acceptance of Silver Fox Road as a town road. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Weddellin?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, thank you on that item. Next item, review and approve 6 Sherwood Drive site plan, special permit and earth removal permit decisions. Now, we've received those drafts and had a chance to look them over and do we have any questions from board members on those two documents? Hearing none, then Chair will entertain a motion to approve the site plan and special permit application decision number 2020-02 for 6 Sherwood Drive. Do we have a motion? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Mr. Weddellin?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We need a motion to approve the earth removal permit and notice of decision for 6 Sherwood Drive.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Weddellin?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, those are done. Well, that's good. That's, that's a good project. I'm glad that's moving along. Now, what I do with my agenda here, it is, okay. Okay, need for new associate planner board, Rich tells me we have not had anyone put their hand up yet. So what advertising steps have we taken, Rich?
So it's been, Betsy, it's on the town website and we pushed it out to Facebook community page to
Rich, I thought we had a volunteer.
No. They didn't want to associate member was a little bit too much
There was another one by email this week.
That was the B1, not, not associate planning board member.
Oh, sorry.
I think that was for me. You can't see me because I'm in Greece and it's 3:00 AM, so it's kind of dark. So I asked to be privy to this meeting because I live on Boardman Street and I really want to know what's going on behind me, especially given the fact that the property next to me was just sold.
Yes, so Mrs. Curtis sent an email of interest to the B1, not we'll talk about that, not yet. This was associate member for the planning board, but you're welcome to join on that if you want. Well, you're
So the reason for me being in this meeting is I just want to know what's going on with the property next door to me. I believe it's 32 Boardman Street. If you guys need someone to step in, I don't know if, you know, it would, if I could serve you in any capacity. I also have another job as a nurse, so it might be a little much.
Well, we, to best of my knowledge, we have not received any plans for development of 32 Boardman Street. And I don't know of anything going on there. There may be something, but it hasn't come to the attention of the planning board. But I must say, I commend you for being up at 3:30 in the morning from Greece to participate in this meeting. God bless you.
Thanks. My child was keeping me up all night anyhow.
Well, you didn't have to tell us that.
32 Boardman Street was bought, was bought by a local person that's just going to rehab some of the property and use it as a rental.
32 Boardman is not in the B1 district.
Yes.
Where does the B1 district end?
It ends just before Kids Place.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of where Kids Place is.
The park area there, that's been abandoned.
So 20, 20 Boardman Street is the last property that's in the B1 on your side of the street.
Okay, and then on the other side of the street, I know that there's there's an abandoned property on the corner of Boardman and 115.
That's not
It's not the B1.
Not the B1.
The one next to it, that's the, used to, years ago, it was a real estate building. Is that part of it?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not part of B1, no.
I apologize for all the questions. It's just I have a personal interest in it.
Sure. So
Well, Rich, if I might make a suggestion, can you, in response to Helen's email, can we just respond to her with a map of the B1 district? And if she has any questions, if she has any questions, we can be in touch, or she can be in touch.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That's a wonderful suggestion.
Well, have a good night, and whatever's left of it.
Yeah. Well, so we still have
I was only going to, I was only going to suggest, Rich, maybe you can contact other boards and committees and see those are typically the people that volunteer, but if you just sent a notice to the chair of each committee or board and see if anyone wants to be an associate member of the planning board.
Sure, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Good suggestion, okay. All right, next item on the agenda is review and approve minutes of meeting for September 8th.
Yes, I've reviewed them, only sent a couple minor changes to Betsy, so I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes into the record as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Weddellin?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mrs. Searle?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, town planner updates. Go ahead, Rich.
So the first first update is relative to the B1 work. I'm going to share, I know I sent you the PowerPoint presentation, but I'll share my screen just to go through it as I talk through the different points to get the board's input on. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So there's really three things I want to go through, committee composition, the function, short-term goals. We did touch on a little bit of this last October 5th, when there was a joint meeting between the B1 committee and the planning board. We had pretty good discussion, but I did want to circle back and follow up, get, just firm up some of the direction on it. And just for informational purposes, fortunately, we do not have that recording. It looks like there was issues with Zoom, so I have to go back to my notes to create minutes, but we, I don't have the video to fall back on right now, so anyway, I just want to let the board know that for the public as well. Fortunately, we had some issues with Zoom, but so in any event, I'll segue to the composition of board. So really the options were to keep the composition the same, change it, form a new committee. So what I've highlighted in blue or font is that the idea is changing the composition of the committee. And I think we had, we got a lot of good feedback through the process thus far. I think one of the things that kind of came through that process, which was learned, I think it would, it tended to be towards more of the exploration of ideas and not necessarily, although there was some thought, and we did work towards putting some bylaws in place, make some changes, but then some questions came up on the, on some of the bylaw recommendations, so really said, okay, we need to take a little bit closer look. So having that be kind of the thought in the back of my head, my suggestion would be to kind of shift and change the composition. And, and the three, there was three board representatives, the board held ZBA and advisory board, that what I was thinking is that if they wanted to serve in a citizen role, they certainly could have, if there was the thought to maybe increase the amount of citizens, but not as a board representative. I think one of the lessons learned was that I think there was a sense that, you know, the, there would be this exchange of back and forth between the B1 and then their rep would go back to the other boards that they sat on and talked through some of the issues. And there might have been some of that, but I can't say consistently that what was, was going on. And even if that was going on, we still always planned on the idea of as we went towards implementing some of these changes, that there would be presentations to the boards as a whole. So kind of thinking about that in the bigger picture, I certainly can see how those three boards, although not in drafting, you know, they're not necessarily adverse drafting zoning bylaws, but to add another planning board member, but increase the citizen aspect of it. So those members could be, if the board goes, follows my recommendation, could be citizen representatives, but not a board representative. So they, and you probably, if you follow along, I think there was certainly a lot of discussion about, well, you know, this is, this is my thought of as an individual, but that might not necessarily be the, the thought of the committee as a whole. And I think, I think quite honestly, sometimes that's challenging for somebody kind of flip back and forth between, you know, my personal viewpoint versus my role in whatever board or committee I'm on. So I haven't thought about that. I thought that it may be easy, but might be more fluid to have a couple planning board members who could, are versed in zoning changes, could, you know, be a little more, have more experience in this area along with some citizens to still have an outside perspective from some citizens, but kind of have that combination of a committee going forward, not totally disband the B1 committee at all, not necessarily put it all on the planning board per se either, but have a kind of a mix in between. So that was my at least recommendation, and so I wanted to just kind of get
Can we, can we step back one step though? What you're talking about is a change to the makeup of the committee in order to accomplish certain goals. And it seems to me we ought to talk about the goals first before we talk about the, the composition of the committee, so
All right, I'll go down, I'll go down to the next
Yeah.
I'll put the goals. So the, the goals of the B1 working committee, well, again, we'll be looking at the zoning changes from a short-term perspective, again, when I'd say short-term, I would use the one-year timeframe from there. It could shift a little bit, but that generally would be the overall idea. And those zoning bylaws are potential changes that we very developed through the B1 process. There could be other ones as well, but at least kind of dig in a little bit and kind of play them out as far as those changes of what they may do or not do. Along with the idea of, when we talked about 40I, I think there was some interest in the 40R, but as we talked about it before, is have a specific 40R project that was done in parallel with either developer or property owner, which as you move along through the process, might be a lot easier for people to understand as opposed to, you know, planning for a district, not necessarily have anything specifically in mind at the moment. And that, and that I think, at least the sense I got from that meeting, I think that might be a more manageable way to handle it because I think two things, it definitely could say, oh, this is what we're talking about, not this hypothetical situation. At the same time, we did talk about some identifying and try to work towards some catalysts for the B1. I certainly think the last item on that list is sewer. I think that's one of the things that that we talked about as being a potential catalyst. So that work is going on. So the B1 committee would be working focused on the sewer and, and kind of simultaneously thinking about a catalyst project. I've reached out to the engineer, Dan American from American Engineering, who was doing the work for the premises for the Dunkin' Donuts. I said, look, you know, you, you came up with some flows based on the previous development proposal. Presume that sewer were to go to your property, what, what could be done there and what you think might be a likelihood to be done. So the B1 committee would be working with, essentially, we'd be looking at Main Street properties from Independence Drive down to essentially Dunkin' Donuts to the fire station as, as a smaller shorter move from the sewer extension, because there has been interest when we had the B1 meeting with the property owners. The premises expressed interest in the B1, Mr. Rogiri had expressed interest in the sewer. Same to be said for the Passini family who owns the property on Rockwood Road. So those would be kind of more tighter goals of the, the moving forward B1 committee to, to work towards. And so those are the initial. Now, the long-term goals that I have Those are the initial, now the long-term goals that I have on the slide. I'll just hold at the moment, we can work back towards those, but those would be. Not necessarily the work of the B one committee, but the work that they're doing obviously would. Have connections to a master plan, so if you know, is it all right to maybe just. Either way, I want to, you know, go back to the composition first, talk about these short-term goals or.
Rich, I, I would, I would go through everything quickly, so we get a framework of what the conversation is.
All right, so I'll, I'll flip over to the next slide, which is longer-term planning goals, so the longer-term planning goals. Is to create a new master plan. Similar to the master plan efforts in the past, the recommendation will be to, to create a master plan steering, which would have. Broad-based representation. This certainly could be an effort of the planning board, but I think if it was broader representation for the master plan, it might. Be received, it might work out well, it's, it's been a method that. Works pretty well, but we don't need to make that decision tonight, or I'm not asking for that tonight. There's two planning documents that are coming up there that tie very well into the master plan, one, the first one is the housing production plan. As I, you see on there, the, it was, it was developed and approved in October of twenty seventeen. The plan will expire in, in twenty twenty-two. That type, the, the previous plan was funded with the, from the Affordable Housing Trust, their funds. I did talk to the Community Preservation Committee last week about possibly funding. The housing production plan, so a lot of the work that would be part of the housing production plan. Would fold into a master plan, which also has a housing component to it. Second to that is the open space recreation plan, similarly, a lot of the topics within open space recreation plan. Would fold into a master plan, now in the case of the open space plan. It doesn't expire to twenty twenty-four, so technically speaking, it's a little bit further out as far as the expiration goes, but. The reason why I'm just putting it here for discussion is that. That is something that was funded by CPC and in the back of my mind. I'm thinking about funding for a master plan and that it's a significant amount of money and how we may be able to kind of go to different pots of money. Or different pots to be able to make it happen, so that's why I'm just, I'm putting that up there. As that plan and, and. If we were to go that route, it would be a situation where we would have it ready to be teed up when it expires. And then the last slide. Is, excuse me, here, so there are, so the town has participated in the community compact program through the state. The town ran them right now. Is working on a master plan with MAPC, they got received funding. From the state to the comp, community compact program, and we have. We have done that already in the past, there's certain. I'll call them topical areas that you can apply for funding through the community compact. There's also technical assistance money that we can, we have applied for in the past through MAPC. Money that comes down through the state, and the last one is town funding. So those are, so I'm thinking in terms of that, this is, the longer term is more focused towards the planning board. When it comes to these planning efforts, but. It certainly is something that needs to be done, I think it kind of was highlighted through this B one process, that overall. You know, larger plan and how the things tied in, some of the, the work of the B one does fit. It, it certainly was in the ninety-two plan, it was in the two thousand seven plan, I went back, looked at housing production plan and those goals. So the work of the B one fits with all these planning exercises and plans that have been done. It's just that I think we've kind of reached that point where, you know, the amount of engagement in the public, we would like to try to increase that a little bit. More than maybe what was done in the past, you know, committees have changed, people have changed, times have changed, so forth. And so that's kind of the, the larger footprint to lay it out, and the one thing before, and I'll pause. Is the housing production plan is very critical for us, because you saw that last slide. I'll just show you that. So that plan was approved by Department Housing Community Development, let me just, went too, too far there, there we go. The ZBA approved two forty B projects that the appeal period expires tomorrow. With those approvals, and with the housing production pla- plan in place, we will. Seek safe harbor from forty B projects, which will expire. Safe Harbor will expire in July of twenty twenty-two, this plan here expires in October of twenty twenty-two. We need, if future forty Bs come in, we will want to have a housing production plan in place, because if we do not. Get. Projects that get us up to ten percent and go through the building permit process. We, we need to be able to make sure we give ourselves credit for incremental progress as well.
Rich, the last time we did the. Housing. Development plan, that was all coordinated through the Affordable Housing Trust? And the consultants they used, are you going to follow the same path?
I would, yes, so I've, I've had discussions with Affordable Housing Trust about that, with Sue Jacobson, well, yeah, I just wanted to. You know, number one, you know, make the planning board aware of it, and aware of in the sense that, yeah, there is a process that we would follow again. But that work of that, of the Affordable Housing Trust ties into the work of the master plan and. And it's, it's, it's not, it's fairly typical these days that. Towns will go through a master plan process, and one of the products. Is a housing production plan that. Meets Department Housing Community Development criteria in order to be certified, so that's why.
I recall that housing plan that this consultant did. Was, had a lot of information, very informative on all the aspects of the town, a lot of the things that the B one committee has talked about, about future growth and that, it was. It was very extensive, the, the report they did, recommend anybody read it that hasn't read it yet.
So it's. So having said that, I think. Thoughts, so let's, let's talk about the short-term, I guess the goals of the B one.
Well, Rich, if I, if I might jump in just in support of what Rich is saying, and add a few thoughts from. My planning board representation on the committee, right, so I think a lot of what Rich has outlined here is. We share some of the same thoughts about how we're moving forward, I, I think the committee was a little bit overwhelmed by the enormity of the task. And, and I think there were a couple of things that we talked about that became, that were mentioned almost at every meeting, right? I think the question of why we're doing this, why we're inviting, why would we even consider inviting development into Norfolk? And, you know, I, again, I, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate that. Now, the master plan and the housing production plan talk about the increase in population of Norfolk in a neighborhood, in the neighborhood of twenty percent over the next ten years. Which is consistent with the twenty percent we've grown in the last ten years, and that twenty percent growth is another twelve hundred to twenty-four hundred people. Right, so those people are going somewhere, right, so you know, those, those two planning documents are saying that the population of this town is increasing. So as a planning board, if we want to plan responsibly for that potential development, then there are certain steps that we need to make. We've, we've made the case, you know, that the, the master plan needs to be updated, the housing production plan needs to be updated, as, as John mentioned, there's. Great data in both of those studies, and to those interested in, in why we're doing what we're doing in the B one committee, both of those documents will, will give you. A great insight into why, why this committee was, was commissioned in the first place. Right, so the second item that came up again and again was, was public education. And that's, maybe education is not the right word, maybe communication or transparency are, are the right words, right, so. It's communicating to the public why we're doing what we're doing and to what our goals are and what the end result may or may, may be, right? From a graphic standpoint, we have the design guidelines, which, you know, was a tool that we could go back to to say, hey, this is. This is kind of what we see when we're talking about a higher density of development. And then the MAPC report talked about a. A maximum density plan, you know, which again starts to put a bookend on some of this development, so. Again, I think to Rich's point, we, we learned a lot in the, in the conversations of the B one committee, but I, I think we learned so much. We lost our path, and that path needs to be redirected, and I think what Rich is getting at here is if we split this path into a short-term goal, which is essentially to do something. And a long-term goal, which is to both plan responsibly for future development and future growth in town. And allow for the opportunity for public communication, right, it, it's that extended period of time that we need. In order to make comprehensive zoning recommendations, right? So I, I, I personally, again, and I know I mentioned this last time, but I think the split path. Although they need to run parallel, I think they're important to do, and again, one is. The short-term goal is to get something done now to, to try and. Provide that catalyst for downtown to show that the town is interested in and capable of working with a developer to a, to a mutual beneficial end. And then there's the larger, long-term planning goal of, of the comprehensive zoning changes for what the future of Norfolk is. That's just a little bit more color behind what Rich, Rich has been explaining, but, and I'll, I'll stop talking now.
The, the. One of the impetus is for getting the B one committee going was. To get some development going in the center of town and some of those lots that have been sitting there since Caesar was a pup. And that required some sewer expansion, and we got a, a tickle from Dunkin' Donuts saying, hey, you know, we can put a, a bigger building here, we can have a restaurant if we had some sewer. And so the, the idea of both a short-term and a long-term look at sewer requirements. I thought was always part of the B one committee's charter, so to speak, and so I, I'm supportive, we, we really do need to get something going in the short-term on, on the sewer. John was, was very. Outspoken on that last time we met with the B one group, and I'm, I'm supportive of that, so.
Walter, let me jump in there because, and Rich cut me off of them wrong, I mean, the sewer, the sewer study is ongoing right now, it's, it's, they're in the middle of putting that together, so. You know, that, that process is, is going, I think we might have.
But what we, what, what was apparent, and I could be wrong, but what was apparent was it was all focused on the long-term and not, and had left out the short-term.
I, I agree with that, this is Chad, Rich, what, what are, what's the schedule on that sewer study?
So just to clarify, that's not, that's not necessarily the case, how the study, the study was structured, it was. It, it was structured on short-term and long-term, the, the more struggling of it. Was the long-term as far as how far to plan out from a long-term perspective, so what. What we're essentially doing right now with the sewer study is. We're planning around the properties that already are connected to the sewer. And then a sewer extension that I just mentioned earlier from Independence Drive down to. Dunkin' Donuts, so they're, they're ready to go on that, the struggle piece was, we had. The B one district was a much larger area geographically, much more comprehensive in nature. And we were talking about trying to plan around a sewer system. That was probably going to be much larger, may not even come to fruition, and so. We need to have more of a nimble, I'll call it a nimble plan, and this is more of a nimble plan. That could be expanded down the road, but it's not, it's not as comprehensive as where we first started, so.
Rich, we, we talked about a phased approach for the sewer study, right, so there, there'd be, what capacity do we have in the plant today? Phase one, what could we support with the plant that we have today? Phase two would be. Can we expand the plant that we have today, right, phase three would be another plant. Right, or potentially phase three would be collaboration with the prison and somehow upgrading their plant. Phase four would be a new plant, right, but each, each of those phases would come with an expanded service area. Right, but the study would tell us what the service areas are capable in each of those phases.
See, I thought, I thought the. I thought the study was arranged differently. I thought they started off, and your meeting started off with looking at a total. Capacity for sewer and who would we connect and how much could you build on each lot? I think the backwards part of it. Was that we have no idea where the source is. For some of us that have been in this for a while, we know that the meeting house town-owned sewer. Is only for those properties and will never change, that excess capacity. Legally can never be touched except for the owners of those properties, and knowing the owners, you'll never get anything, anybody to acquiesce. My thought was by taking that capacity and the land behind it. Again, to do something, number one, that's a little bit quicker, and number two, accommodates new growth in existing properties. Was to start off looking right away, and what are the expansion capacities and the land available on the existing system? I also.
John, that's what we're doing though.
Oh, I didn't think they were doing that, I didn't get that until the end.
Again, my understanding is, is we're going through this phased approach, right, we've had this conversation, I'm not, I haven't heard from Woodward and Curran in a while, so I'm not sure, but again. The plan, last time we talked, was a phased approach, it was to determine what the existing plant could serve, phase one. Phase two was expanding the existing plant, phase three was collaborating with the prison, and phase four was a new plant.
See, I don't remember the phases at that at all, I know there was talk about the, the back and forth about could we use the existing capacity? That's out the window, it's never going to happen. They talked about.
I don't think that's a foregone conclusion.
It is, it was legally researched, and we know that, it is a foregone conclusion, that's what I'm saying. And the study that was done showed a sewer line going all by gravity from the center of town down to by the Freeman. We talked to the state nine years ago, and they said it was absolutely impossible, would never happen, that they would let a local community commit and tie into this system. For multiple reasons, so that being said, the sewer study that sat there for ten years is. Still sitting there, we spent twenty thousand dollars. I never thought that any part of the first steps were looking at where was the land around that system that we have? Is that land doable for expansion of a treatment plant? And if it was, what type of mechanics as far as increasing pumps on that would you need, and how much gallons would we have? And as I remember from that study, again, I could be misremembering, but then again, we have no information on this so far, and I think the study was started, what, five months ago? But at least that gives us something that potentially is going to be usable. Excuse me, usable right away and could help existing businesses. I also asked Rich to look into, is it possible if we had an extension, expansion on the sewer we have? Could we make that only for commercial use? Because right now, when you do forty B, forty R and change zoning, we're going to get about. Eighteen to twenty units on an acre of land based on septic. So no matter what route somebody goes, your residential is going to be pretty much limited to that, so depending on what the developer wants, and I've got thoughts on that. The residential really doesn't need extra capacity, I was hoping we could find where, where the capacity is needed. And would bring what the folks want, which is places to walk to. Get a, get a separate, if we could find a system there that had an acre of land, I don't even know, is there an acre and a butt in that that we could use? If there is, and you can get thirty-five thousand gallons of sole capacity, and you could use that for all commercial use, if that was legal, I got, did you check with town council and see if that works, Rich?
I did, I talked to the engineers so far, but we haven't engaged town council.
Okay, but if it did, you could use all that, all that excess capacity. Or to get our, the business area of the downtown going, because they, face it, they need sewer and they need a gas line. And until you have that, you're never going to have a restaurant, so it just seemed like as I was following the build-out and. Figuring out a build-out on a potential lot is really a hard job to do, and again, it was all the search, and we don't even know if we have any capacity, so it didn't seem like it was the right direction, but.
So, so Rich, it, it might be time to get Woodward and Curran in front of the planning board. So Rich, it might be time to get Woodward and Curran in front of the planning board again.
No, so let me just tie it all back, just to clean up some of the points. One is it was always the phased approach. The question was, yes, can we expand the existing plant? We might need another field. Can we do that? Do we need to? Everything was always built into the study in a phased approach. When I when I circle back to the idea of the issue of how much area that we want to sewer down the road, that was more the stumbling block. We're moving away from that. We're going to focus the study is still always phased, but we're going to walk back a little bit on the presumptions that the whole entire B one district needs to be evaluated for sewer. That's what we're we're stepping back away from. So we're we're looking at the properties within the reservations and looking at that B one expansion from Independence Drive down to to Dunkin Donuts and they're ready to go. So the engineers are ready to do the fun and they have been working all along. So I don't want you to walk away thinking, you know, they've been, they've assessed the plan. They're looking at the expanding land. So the study has been going on. And what now we're talking about is just to nail it in where this is where we're going to go down the path. So they're.
If nobody, if nobody, if nobody can tell us how much clear free abutting land we have at the sewer treatment plant to expand a field, then you really even know if that's a potential. And it seems to me in the six months, someone would have at least looked at the land area that we own. Is there an area for field or maybe done a few prick tests to see if is the soil suitable for septic treatment plant?
Rich, do we have a list of of what the sewer study is trying to accomplish? So can we do like an executive summary?
Sure, I guess.
Yeah, we real, I mean, do we really need to go into that? I mean, I think if we're looking for a catalyst, we got to build the infrastructure. And I that we got to get sewer, gas, water, electric in the downtown area. Does it have to be everywhere right now? No, but if we're looking for some catalyst projects to to get this going, you know, we had the we talked about at the meeting, we have one catalyst project that said on there on Union Street. If we want a second one, we got to get sewer down there. So I look at the this sewer master plan or whatever you want to call it. That's our critical path.
Dunkin Donuts is set to go. They're hopeless. They're going to redo their whole project. And the good thing is they have a gas line.
Right, guys, we're we're miscommunicating here. The sewer plan is happening. Right? But we what no one here understands is exactly what the goals of the sewer study are.
I certainly don't understand what the goals are and I.
I don't.
Well, I do because I read the study. And of the $250,000 study, it seems like at the very end, after they do all of their homework, they're going to figure out where do we find the capacity? Because like I said, it's been six months and we don't even know if we have land to expand. To me, this is we've been through, we've been through a 40 hour grant that we got 30,000 for. We've been through a sewer study grant and a lot of these state grants seem to work the same way. And sometimes they're somewhat backwards. If someone's looking into develop something like that, I'll tell you, the process that's been going on now certainly be the direction that somebody would be going for if they were looking to build to make a prop. That's what I'm saying, because we still, we know nothing. And a lot of these things they were looking into, as I mentioned to Rich and I talked to Kevin, this was looked through. It's not going to happen. So if you want to repeat the efforts, that's fine. You know, that's someone else's problem. But you're not going to get some quick results and get people going i- if things just go on and directed. And that's what's been going on.
Just to to come back, I can, I could listen, I can forward you the scope of work for the for the sewer study to take a look and you can read through it. But every every point that each individual member has made is within the sewer master plan study. I'll forward it to you to take a look at it. I don't, where we're at is the catalyst focused sewer study. I'm not a I'm not a sanitary engineer, so I'm I'm trying to convey and communicate to what what the challenge was before this particular point was that we were, we had a much wider spans of a sewer study area. And we had and we have phases built into it. That what I'm saying to you is that we're backing off of that much larger. Let's start small and plan towards the future. But we're going to try to plan based on some viable or highly likely projects as opposed to trying to bring sewer to areas that it may never happen. We don't want to build a sewer system based on an area that's not going to happen, then we can't operate the system. So that's those are, those were the challenges before this where we're at right now.
Okay, so one of your next steps, I heard you say is is to sit down with the engineers that are doing this study and make sure that the direction is as you just described, right? Short term, let's look at what we've got, looks to how to expand it. And and let's put the effort there now and postpone the effort on the longer term to make sure they're they're directed the way you want them to be directed, correct?
We're going to do a little bit of both, but yes, that's that's the essence of. And be and would work through the B one committee, but in a restructured format.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Go back to the to the restructuring committee slide for a minute, would you? Okay. I understand that the the point you made about the board members kind of being conflicted as to whether the opinion they're offering is their own or they representing their board. I understand that. Tell me more about why you want to add more citizen representation.
Well, if you wanted to have, I'm not married to that idea, but if you wanted to, since we were essentially, if you if you didn't add any more citizens, you'd be removing three members and adding one back. So you'd have two planning board members and two, we two, we have two citizens right now at large that would remain.
Okay, so so adding citizens would bring the board back to the strength that it had. But with the different representations, what you're saying.
Correct.
And how many, how many board members in total would that be?
So I was suggesting two planning board members.
Yeah.
I we certainly could, we could make it three if you wanted to.
Well, anyway, two, two planning board members. And keep, keep going.
Two planning board members, two of the existing Gary Sullivan and Hadada, the the citizen representatives right now.
Yeah, four.
And then anywhere between one to three, I guess the the total committee size right now is seven, so.
Okay, so you want to bring it back to to five to to seven again?
Yeah, and I think.
Yeah, okay.
Citizen, some participation, I think, I think is helpful.
I'd I'd argue that if you're going to be negotiating zoning changes, you need a member of the zoning board in the in the committee.
Z B A? You're talking to Z B A?
Yes, and and Rich, you know, Rich mentioned in his in his portion of the intro that you know, we originally thought that the the representatives of the boards would be going, going back to their boards and having conversations and bringing the boards along. And I don't know that that really happened, but I think it's a requirement. It has to happen. The the part of this education or communication or transparency process that I mentioned is you know, all of the boards need to work on being in step and agreeing with the right things to do here, right? So in other words, we had to answer questions in this B one zoning process about why we're trying to increase density in a district where the zoning board is actively reducing density of 40B projects. Right? That's a hard question to answer. And and one would say it's contradictory. You have one committee recommending one thing and one board recommending another. So we need to get the committees and the boards on the same page.
Yeah, and and that's right, that the the thought as to how to do that was came out of the the failure to do it the first time around. And we thought cheap is if we bring a member from each of these boards onto the B one committee, they will do just what you talked about, go back and keep their board informed. But perhaps that didn't happen, so there's still a need to keep those boards informed and and participating or at least getting their inputs. So maybe it it there's a different vehicle for doing that with the some joint meetings between the B one and the various boards or something else, but they've got to be kept at a loop rather than wait till you get to the end.
I agree, Walter, and I and that gets to the the sort of speech I gave at our our last combined meeting is is that I think we as a planning board and a driver for this commission committee need to give better guidelines, right? We need to set expectations and goals, so we need to say, you know, there should be a chair. You know, we need to say there should be members of these boards and those members are obligated to go to their boards and continue the conversation and bring back the conversation to the committee.
Or or as if you're going to, if you're going to dismiss those members, then you've got to find some other vehicle for going back and and keeping in touch with those boards. Well, I think a a number of five to seven is is a reasonable number. You can get some things done. If it gets too big beyond that, it gets unwieldy.
Well, I think maybe picking up on what what Aaron was discussing there, if there was the thought that to retain the membership of the zoning board of appeals. And I certainly think the Board of Health, I think, is 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 done what they need to do. So I I don't think that's too much of a stretch to argue with them.
Another way to think about this is is you could, you could make the short term committee, say, five people, right? To make it a little bit more efficient, a little quicker, because it's a short term burn, right? And then you have the long term committee, which is maybe seven, eight, nine people, right? Because you want more opinions and there's more time to talk it through and more board representation that's necessary. So, you know, so say the Board of Health is out of the short term, maybe they still want to be involved in the long term. Or, you know, same thing for the advisory board or or the zoning board, but.
Why are we, why are you proposing removing the advisory board from the short term?
The, well, first of all, there was a, there was a, in some respects, a question whether they could serve another committee as all fundamentally, but aside from there at least from my understanding of how they operate, they're really eat on meet on as needed basis. So it doesn't sound as if, you know, they would just convene as much on.
So so instead of having an advisory board member on the committee, I understand that might be a conflict of interest, okay? So we just need to do a better job of having a joint meeting with them once we have some some decision or once the B one committee has achieved their goals, I guess you could say.
Right, so that's where I get back. Yeah, that last bullet point, that's what I mentioned down there. There, they might be coming off as an individual board member to this committee, but then going forward that we have to to meet with those different boards and committees on on doing it. My my thought was that, again, the planning board is more more heavily involved with, you know, zoning development and bylaw development. And it was a good fit to get in more in the devil in the details. And and then have some citizen input with it, I think.
And that's fine with me. I I think CBA needs to stay on there. But the Board of Health and advisory, I would agree, based upon what you've told me, I'd agree that it right now, we don't need them on there at this current time.
Rich, do you still have funds from M A P C?
I do. We're, we're, we still have funds. I'm just trying to be sharper than pencil, make sure we use them wisely, what we have left, so. So then, having said that, is there a thought of adding, what's the thought of adding one more planning board member? Is there an appetite for that, hopefully?
I guess what what's the need for another planning board member? Is is there a need or is it just a?
I'll state that another way. Personally, I'm much more interested in the long term plan than I am in the short term plan. I would like to be involved with the long term committee. So the short term committee would need one or two committee members to be on volunteer for it.
Yeah, I think it's just another member who's got expertise and experience, eyes and ears and mouth that help help kind of go through these changes and and look at the scenarios and just kind of vetting out, you know? Hopefully, when they would come back, it would get us closer to the finish line. Adds another perspective, but. So Aaron, are you saying that you don't want to do the B one anymore? Is more the longer term you?
I'm saying that given my personal choice, I would choose to be the planning board representative on the long term B one committee plan.
Okay.
So so I guess I'm just trying to clarify here. Are we looking at creating tonight? Are we looking at identifying the number of individuals for two different committees or or one committee is a subset of the other?
No, no, well, my my goal for tonight was to the B one, okay? And I'll call it whatever, want to call it B one implementation. The longer term goal of the long range planning, I did illustrate or at least give you some options there. We're not doing that tonight. But I think there's, so I don't need to answer on that per se for this evening, but I I would, if possible, get a better, stronger direction just on the shorter term, the B one stuff. Because we want to keep, keep moving along.
Yeah, I don't think we should address the long term issue tonight. I think it's good to raise it and I'm glad you did, but let's focus on the on the the short term issue. If you want two members of the of the B of the planning board on the on the B one committee, I think that's appropriate. And I'll stick my hand up if you want me, if you want another person, then then you better ask for them.
I guess I need to clarify, Aaron, again, if I know you you preferences for the long term, so is it, is this a?
I heard him say he wouldn't back out of the short term, but his preference is the long term. We're not having a long term committee right right away, so hang in there, Aaron, until we get one going.
I I think it's a mistake not to keep them going in parallel because we got to push the master plan and all these other things, right? We need, we still need to, we still need to go forward with the M A P C presentation to the public. I mean, there's I mean, the the original short term plan is has extended to two years already, right? What are the chances that the next short term plan is actually going to be executed in one year? Right? And if we wait for the short term plan to take hold before we start to the long term, we're going to be four or five years down the road and have done nothing for the long term plan. And quite frankly, that's what I'm concerned with. I'm concerned with adding 2,400 people to town. And that those 2,400 people being put in places where 40B developers want to put them and not where the town has responsibly planned for them.
Yeah, so we're not, it's not one or the other, Aaron, though. I mean, just to be clear, we're, there is going to be simultaneous. It's just the master plan committee can't start tomorrow. That's all. I mean, it's, there's, there's got to be.
I'll start it tomorrow. I'll start it tomorrow.
Just saying, you got, you, we have to get a scope of work together, get the committee going. We have to identify the funding to be able to get someone. So that stuff is going to be going on. I'm just not saying it's not happening next week.
My recommendation would be you create this short term committee now and then those members, then you would add members to that group for the long term committee down the road. Because we we, there's some key aspects that need to be addressed in the short term. And and some of those things, yes, there's some things for the long term that will need to start sooner than later. But there's, I think you start with a short term committee and expand upon it down the road. It's just my thought.
So if there were seven said that would, is there a slightly scaled retweet B one committee that includes one additional planning board member? Be one committee that includes one additional planning board member. Retains the zoning board member and there, we would remove, the thought would be to remove Board of Health and Advisory Board.
That's acceptable to me.
Yeah. And then I think on your, your list of goals here, I don't know if these are in order, but I, I still believe the wastewater. Plan has to be one of your priorities, your top priorities.
They're, they're just listed, they're not.
Okay. Yep.
Rich, could you do me a favor for our next meeting?
Yeah.
Would you find out how much we've paid towards the grant to the engineers so far and have them give us a, a compilation of what they've done? For the next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I've probably talked enough on this topic. Unless there's any other questions?
I, I did want to say thank you to Aaron and anyone else who's on the call from the B one committee. All the work and time and effort you've put in. I mean, it was a great, uh, up to this point, it's a great, um. Package that you've put together and, um. I'm looking forward to seeing some zoning changes coming out of that. I know we're not going to be able to get to fall. Meeting, but hopefully if we keep moving forward, we can get some of this to the spring meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'd echo with that. It's, it's, it's especially around zoning. It's really hard. It's hard work, damn hard work.
Yes.
Richard, you, you got what you need?
I do.
Okay. Um. You said you would circulate the, uh, the sewer. Doc, document. So you're going to do, going to do that, right?
Go up.
Okay, yep. Um. Are there any other updates you want to offer on different topics?
No. Not this time.
Okay. Um, my next item says B one committee developments. I think we've covered that unless, Aaron, you've got something else in your pocket.
I don't, and we can probably take this line item off at this point.
Okay. Is there any other items on our agenda for the evening? Anybody have any, any new business they want to bring up? Okay, uh, then, uh, hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
We have a second. All right. Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.